Welcome, everyone. I'm calling this Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order. Please stand if you're able and join us in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you. Item one, official meeting notification. Dr. Reuter.
Thank you. Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. Item B, roll call.
Medved.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
I am here. Loth.
Here.
Pollak.
Here.
King-Botham.
Here.
Brown.
Present.
Item two, approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on, item three, reports. District administrator update. Dr. Reuter.
Thank you. First day of summer break, and we already have kids back at school. That's how much they love this place. But I joke, but we ended the school year last week on Friday with a half-day for students, and everyone safely got home, a lot of celebration. We'll talk briefly in a minute about graduation and your role in that, but we also had our 4K students, our first class ever, complete a successful year this year, and then obviously the transitions through all of our grade levels. So we're proud of the work that was done by our teaching staff, our maintenance staff, our custodians, our food servers, our bus drivers, you as a board, our administrators, and having a successful school year. Summer, so summers started today for kids, but then summer school started as well. So I'm going to have Mr. Mizziak say a few words about the kickoff of summer school this morning at KMS.
As we kicked off the first session of summer school, it's the one we classes. So there are five classes that we offer at KMS, and then summer school gym also started at the high school. So KMS welcomed 125 kids to the first day of summer school.
And then Ms. Alton-Dorf can share with us a little bit about summer school breakfast and what that looks like, is something new to Germantown this year.
Sure. We started summer school breakfast this morning. The breakfast is from 7:30 in the morning to 7:50 in the morning. It is available to anybody in our community up until the age of 18 for free. Today, we served 60 breakfasts at the first session of summer school, and then we provided 30 additional bags of breakfast to students that were in the second and third session. So a total of approximately 100 breakfasts were served this morning to our students, and if they have brothers or sisters that came with them, that seems to be what happened today. But if you don't have brothers and sisters in the summer school, you still can come to Kennedy Middle School and get served breakfast throughout our summer school program, so the dates of the summer school. Free to the families, and it is free to the district as well because it is federally funded for breakfast. So if this is successful, we'll continue to do it throughout the summers, and we could possibly, in the future, add lunches to that if we see a need in our community.
And just the last update, thank you to the board and community members who joined us this last Saturday and the previous Saturdays. We finalized our building tours, and we were able to spend time walking through and looking at the behind-the-scenes of how our buildings are operated in areas that are working really well, in areas that we know we have a five-year capital plan built around. So I don't know if any other board members have comments about the tours the last two Saturdays.
Just wanted to thank Frank Lord for leading those, and I found him very worthwhile.
It was very timely. His wife went into labor today, so it all worked out well. All right, and that's what we have for this week, or this month's update.
Okay. Any more comments, questions? Okay, moving on. Item B, GHS graduation 2023. I will start off. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend this one of the events I don't like to miss because it is one of the fun things that we get to do as board members. And I'd like to thank Mr. Barney for stepping in and taking the role of giving the commencement speech. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And I'll let the board talk about their experience.
Yeah, thought it was a great event, very smooth. I was a little worried with 2,000 people being in there that it would be a little too warm, but I think the high school team did a good job keeping it cool in there, so I appreciate that.
I thought it was very enjoyable. I thought it moved along nicely. I actually enjoyed it more than my own graduation a few years ago. The students are great, good eye contact, firm handshakes, very impressive.
Yeah, it's a great day. I kind of feel guilty. It's the parents and the students that have done all the work, and I especially thank the parents for sending their students to our schools every day, ready to learn. So I kind of feel guilty that I'm the guy that gets to hand their student their diploma. But anyway, I'm probably smiling as big and wide as the students are, and occasionally there's a student that looks a little bit concerned, and I find that when they see me smiling, that they start smiling also by the time they shake my hand and grab their diploma. So it's a, it's really, really a fun day, and I enjoy doing it. And congratulations to all of this year's graduates.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the valedictorians. It's very impressive that there were seven, that it's not, they just didn't concentrate just on school, they were also well-rounded, activities in the community, sports, so that is really impressive to be able to juggle all of that and do so well, so that's really impressive.
Yeah, it's definitely an honor. It's the best day, besides the first day and the last day of school. And Mike, everybody smiles when he smiles, so.
Yeah, I would just say the Sevendorf presentation that the valedictorian gave was fantastic.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving on to item C, Amy Bell Elementary School presentations. Ms. Katie Cole, come on down.
Hi, good evening. I am going to introduce three of Amy Bell third-grade teachers, Chelsea Lovell, Tammy Kiesling, and Ally Wondry, and they can tell you a little bit about a project that they did with their, they're now going to be fourth graders, but they're then third-grade students that they're excited about. I want to thank the students and their parents for coming on day one of summer to come and present to you. They're very excited, and the teachers have been handing it off to them so they can tell you a little bit about the project. Thank you so much for allowing our students this opportunity to share an end-of-the-year project with you. It has been a longstanding third-grade tradition at Amy Bell for our last ELA unit to be our wax museum. From start to finish, it takes approximately six weeks of hard work and dedication. Students choose from a wide variety of books from the Who Was series. Students choose a famous person and read his or her biography. Our third graders learn how to take notes about their reading. Then they take those notes and create a multi-paragraph essay. These paragraphs include information about their famous person's early life, later life, accomplishments, and other interesting facts. Students create a display board, which you see here, which includes their paragraphs as well as images relating to their famous people. The final step of this project is for the students to do an oral presentation. Students write a short script highlighting what their person is best known for. With the help from their families, they put together a costume in order to really bring their person back to life. So sit back, enjoy, several of our Amy Bell third graders as they present their wax museum speech. I am proud to present Autumn Peeler, Rory Kincaid Pickler, Allison Uteck, Annie Ludovic, Jack Glimm, Alex Cook-Cook, Lucas Heller, Micah Van Serke, Kate Blankenheim, and Josiah McNaul. Please enjoy.
Hi, my name is Dani Yoclee. I was born on August 13, 1860, in Durham County, Ohio. I am famous for meeting Queen Victoria, showing 15,000 women how to shoot, and being the sharp-shooting horseback riding symbol of the Wild West. I died on November 3, 1926, at the age of 66. Thank you for visiting me today.
Hi. Hi, my name is Gal Leau. I was born in 1564. I am famous for discovering the four moons of Jupiter, inventing the telescope, and discovering the sun is in the center of the universe. I died in 1642. Thank you for visiting me today.
Hi, my name is Charles Schultz. I was born on November 26, 1922. I am famous for making the Just Keep Laughing comic, making the Little Folks comic, and making the Famous Peanuts comic. I died on February 12, 2000, at the age of 78. Thank you for visiting me today.
Hi, my name is Derek Jeter. I was born on June 26, 1974. I am famous for reaching 3,000 career hits, playing baseball for the New York Yankees, and being a good sport on and off the field. I am currently 48 years old. Thank you for visiting me today.
Hi, my name is Abel Hamlin, and I was born on February 12, 1809. I am famous for my tall hat, the 16, being the 16th president, and the Emancipation Proclamation. I died on April 15, 1865. Thank you for visiting me today.
Hi, my name is Harry Houdini, and I was born on March 24, 1874. I am famous for being an escape artist, being a movie star in The Master Mystery, and being the first person to fly a plane over Australia. I died on Halloween 1926. Thank you for visiting me today.
Hi, my name is Bill Gates. I was born October 28, 1955. I am famous for being the founder of Microsoft, donating billions of dollars to worthy causes, and being a third-digit person. I am currently 67 years old. Thank you for visiting me today.
Hi, my name is Princess Diana. I was born on July 1, 1961, in the Park House. I am famous for being a princess, working with the Red Cross, and helping a lot of people. I died on August 31, 1997, in a car crash. Thank you for visiting me today.
Hi, my name is Queen Elizabeth I. I was born on September 7, 1533. I am famous for showing that a woman can fight war as well as any other king, being Queen of England, and I survived a Russia death. I died on March 24, 1603. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucille.
Hi, my name is Lucille Ball. I was born on August 6, 1980, 1911. I am famous for starring in the show I Love Lucy, winning four Emmy awards, and for my red hair. I died on April 26, 1989. Thank you for visiting me today.
Do you have any questions for anyone?
Mr. Barney, go ahead.
I want to thank Chelsea Lovell for inviting the board. I got to go see this in person, I think, was it June 2nd, maybe? Outstanding. I was glad I was able to come and see all of them, but it was great seeing them for a second time. You kids did great. The costumes are awesome. Keep up the good work in fourth grade.
Yep, and I actually was able to attend with Mr. Barney. We got to see almost everybody, I feel. A little disappointed that Mr. Hershey didn't show up because we didn't make it over by him in time to get the chocolates the first time, but we'll let that one go.
No, thank you all for coming. We really appreciate it. One of the, we talked about graduation a little bit ago, and being able to see our kids in action, what they're actually learning and accomplishing in third grade, it's impressive. And you guys are well on your way to building a strong future with the education model that you guys are example, examples of today. I really appreciate you coming out and sharing with us. We, we really enjoy this. We're thrilled that you could come. Thank you so much.
Yeah, especially on your first day of summer break.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you a minute to get organized. Next on the list is citizen comments. I'm Melissa, just verifying, no one signed up? Okay. Okay, moving on to item five, consent agenda. Item A, approval of the May 22, 2023 meeting minutes. Item B, approval of teacher resignations. Item C, approval of teacher contracts, and item D, approval of donations.
I will make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D with a correction to the May 22 minutes, and that correction is updating the location to show the Germantown PAC instead of district office.
Hey, Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Ewer with the second. Any further discussion?
I would just ask that Mr. Nowak and Mr. Lamb share a little information regarding teacher contracts, as there's a position in there that was alluded to during the finance committee with the CISA I contract, and how we as a district are being more cost-cognizant and forward-thinking with the contract that's being presented this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Reuter is talking about the deaf and hard-of-hearing contract that was brought forward. In this particular situation, this was a teacher that was contracted through CISA, and as we get deeper and deeper into discussions, we look at situations where bringing an employee like this onto, onto us with Germantown often makes a lot of sense. And in this particular situation, we looked at the financial side of things and framed a contract offer, and we're very happy to bring this teacher on with us.
We have a quality candidate who is valued by staff and parents alike, and somebody who is excited to help build and grow our deaf and hard-of-hearing program within the district without having to, her herself, be traveling throughout a variety of different districts, in addition to the cost savings.
Very good.
And then the second item I'd like to highlight on the consent agenda this evening is the donation from Johnson's Greenhouse. Mr. Pollak will speak more to that in the building committee report, but the initial donation that we believe to have received was going to be for $30,000 towards our green space project at the high school, and they donated an additional $20,000 to use for future work after we secure access, that Mr. Pollak will speak to a little bit about in the building committee, as well as we have other donations, like usual, MacArthur PTA with many generous donations this evening, Kennedys Middle School PTA, and then our student council at the high school. So to all of our, I think we say this every month, our generous donors, thank you.
Very good. Anyone, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you. Moving on to item six, Building and Grounds Committee, June 5, 2023 committee meeting update. Mr. Pollak.
Yes, so we met June 5. Main topic of that evening was the GHS green space. Proud, well, a little bit of background, I suppose, first. Back in April of last year, we approved, in effect, phase one of the GHS green space project, which basically was research, fundraising, just kind of opening the door for them to begin doing the things that they would need to do to try to figure some things out. Proud to say that we have been able to move to, officially move to a phase two, which includes creating a safe and code-compliant access in space within the courtyard itself. So what does that mean? Basically, doors, access devices, motion sensors, a PA system, fire equipment, like the horn, the strobes, the pull, that would allow students, in effect, and others within the building, to access the green space. As was mentioned, Johnson Nursery has been very generous in, well, originally saying 30,000 and adding an additional 20,000 for future work. So of course, we thank them for that. Mark McClellan and Rob Dumert from Johnson Nursery was there. Mark is the environmental club advisor. And just to note, too, that phase three, which will hopefully occur when the students come back to school, will be the concrete entry slabs, which our teachers and the tech ed students will work on. So that will, once again, add a little bit more value. Every phase, the goal is to add as much value as we can, and obviously, this phase two of gaining access to the courtyard and the cleanup and everything else adds a tremendous value, since really there is zero value in that space right now. And any questions?
Johnson Nursery also provided new rendering drawings of each phase and what that could look like that are at a more realistic scale, so that we can use those to build off of, for future phases of work as funds are appropriated to continue to improve that space over time.
Good progress, very good. Thank you. Moving on to item seven, Teaching and Learning Committee. Mr. Ewer.
Yes, Teaching and Learning Committee met June 5 at 5:15 PM, approximately two hours. During this, Mr. Mizziak provided the committee with a report on the district's teachings surrounding the Holocaust instruction and Act 30, which is state legislation that impacts what we should or what they would like us to teach in that regards. This was provided at the request of the committee following citizen comments prior, from the prior full board meeting. District has, the district has been providing instruction on this topic for several years prior, I believe it was nine years or possibly 10 years was given prior to Act 30 going into effect this school year. A little more specifics on this, we conduct it in seventh grade in accordance with Act 30, we could choose between sixth through eighth, and then again in the high school. In seventh grade, we conduct it during the month of May through our reading and social studies programs, direct. The district provides notice to the parents on what will be covered through the syllabus at the beginning of the year. The timing of this instruction coincides with some of the reported incidents that we had seen in the district. It should be noted that the reported incidents were investigated, and action was taken in alignment with district policy. We can't go into the specifics on that for privacy reasons, but no, the district does take this seriously, and we are continuing to review any other potential reported incidents. The district did, preparing for this report, did reach out to the Holocaust Education Research Center and spoke with Sam Goldberg, who is their director of education. He explained they often see increases in students' behavior similar to what our district is seeing following instruction provided in this manner. The committee provided feedback on several points. One was regarding parental notification, and that it potentially could be better if presented similar to our, our suicide prevention material, so it would be provided at the time or just before the time that we start teaching this in the seventh grade, and that that notification also provide a list of resources to assist parents with in-home discussions for their children. That way, the parents are looped in with what the school's doing, and kind of two-pronged approach, and understand maybe their students are coming home with some big questions in regards to a large topic. I would suggest, that was the Cliff Notes version of that portion of the meeting, so I would suggest taking the time to view the meeting in full on recording if you would like more information. Next up, we had, Mr. Lamb provided the committee with an update on ESAR mental health plans specific to implement dielectric behavior therapy, if I got that right, training for our pupil services staff at a cost of about just under $16,000. During the discussions of this, several concerns were raised, and the committee was not provided sufficient answers to create an understanding of what it would look like used in the schools, and why this would be the right direction for the district to take. Currently, this approach would seem to blur the lines between counseling and therapy, and would possibly exceed the district's scope of responsibility. As we left the discussion, it seemed to be a multi-tiered system of support approach to social-emotional learning. Currently, the Teaching and Learning Committee has begun a preliminary review of the district's SEL programming. It's my belief that building out a multi-tiered system of support for SEL before the district clearly defines their approach to SEL is putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. The other concern was on the parental involvement front, that this approach seemed to be lacking, or at least taking into consideration parental notification and involvement in the counseling sessions that this would lend our staff to take with the students if, if a situation should arise. And finally, and this will be covered under B, the approval of the 23 reading pilot proposal. Mr. Mizziak provided further information for the fall 23 reading pilot. At this time, Teaching and Learning Committee will ask for the board to entertain our positive recommendation to approve piloting of the reading resources of HMH's Intuit Reading, Super Kids K through 2, and McGraw-Hill's Wonders during the fall of the 23-24 school year for K through fifth grade.
Okay, that comes to the board with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Mr. Barney.
What's the funding source for this? Is this going to be ESAR dollars or Teaching and Learning budget?
Ultimately, it's going to be ESAR dollars.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you. Is that all?
That's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to item A, Finance Committee. Mr. Loth.
Yes, good evening. The Finance Committee meeting met. Am I, uh?
There you go.
Am I good? Okay, there I am. Yes, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening, and we approved June vouchers. We went, also went through Brittany's variance report. I'll give the Cliff's Notes summary here. We spent $1,196,693 less than last year at this time. However, our revenues are approximately $666,216 less than they were at this time last year also. So that's the Cliff's Notes version for the whole thing, which Brittany does a very good job at. You'll have to go back to the Finance Committee video when it comes up. It's not posted yet because the meeting was earlier this evening. Next item is a board item 8B, and that is the 2023-2024 meal and milk prices. What's going on here is the student prices are remaining the same. The adult lunch price is increasing from $4 to $4.50, and the adult breakfast is increasing in price from $2.50 to $2.65. So the Finance Committee brings a motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-two, Four Meal and Milk Prices.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes.
Next item is Board Item Eight C, Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-two, Four District Copy Paper Purchase. And papers come down in price a little bit. Brittany, I chose to go with two separate vendors to get the best price. And the Finance Committee brings forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to order eight hundred and forty cases of white paper from Complete Office Supply not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars and one hundred and twenty cases of colored paper from Veritiv not to exceed five thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars for the district throughout the Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-two, Four School Year as needed.
Okay, that also goes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion? I just want to verify that this is for next year, for the entire year, and there's no supply chain issues that we're worried about will happen now?
Currently, no.
Yes, the entire year, and Brittany's shaking her head no, no supply chain issues. I'll just go with my quick math. I believe it's about one point five trucks worth of paper, so that's how we get the best price.
Very good. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
Okay. Next item is Board Item Eight D, Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-two, Four M J Care Contract. This was presented to us by Todd Lamb, Director of Pupil Services. It's very similar to last year's contract. The Finance Committee brings forward with a positive recommendation for the board to approve the M J Care Therapy Staffing Agreement for the Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-two, Four School Year in an amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand dollars using flow-through special education funds.
All right, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes.
Okay, next item was Board Item Eight E, Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-two, Four CISA One Contract. There was one acronym in there, D H H, Deaf and Hard of Hearing is what that was for. So we have hired a teacher to provide those services for the district at a cost savings to the district. The Finance Committee brings forward with a positive recommendation to the board for approval of the CISA One Contract for the Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-two, Four School Year not to exceed one hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents and funded out of the flow-through special education budget.
Okay, that comes to the board with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes.
Okay, next item is Board Item Eight F, District Camera Lease Renewal. And a question I had is why is there a, I'm sorry, license renewal? Why is there a license when we own the cameras? Well, we do own the cameras, but the license is for the use of the software. That's got all the special functions. So the Finance Committee brings forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to purchase, for the purchase of two hundred and ninety-three Gen Tech Advantage licenses for a total of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars using general fund dollars.
That comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes.
Okay, next item was Board Item Eight G, Six Hundred and Fifty Student Chromebook Financing. And I should have mentioned for the cameras also, this was provided by Jeff Crawford. I believe he's new with the district, right? Okay, thank you. These are for, these are Chromebooks for high school students coming in. Brittany, you'll help me out with this one.
Sure, the half of them are for high school students coming in. So three hundred of this set have to go back. That means we have a remaining three hundred. Those three hundred are going to go to middle school students and the new ones are going to high school students because they are able to keep their Chromebooks after their senior year. So moving forward, we will not have to return the Chromebooks.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the Finance Committee brings forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to lease purchase Chromebooks from B D J Tech and Finance, the lease purchase through a four-year lease agreement with American Capital in an amount not to exceed two hundred and three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents with an annual P and I payment of fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents as presented and charged to the appropriate capitalization and lease accounts in the general fund.
Again, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes.
Okay, next item, it's a busy night. Board Item Eight H, Sixty-five Firefly P L T W Project Lead the Way Laptops Purchase and Financing. It's believed that the old computers that these are replacing are about five years old. The Finance Committee brings forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation the purchase of sixty-five H P Firefly Workstations for eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars from Vanguard as the winning bid for the R F P.
That also comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just mention, Brian, that next month financing for this will come forward.
Just a quick question. Typically, we did PCs. Is this an upgrade to go to laptops now?
The current sixty-five Fireflies that we're on right now, those are for Project Lead the Way. They're not the same type of Chromebooks that the, every student receives. These do additional, have additional programs on them and can do additional things for Project Lead the Way.
Little more horsepower.
So we upgraded to laptops a while ago?
Yes, they're, yeah, they're on a cart in their higher, to Mr. Barney's point, a higher-powered functioning PC laptop that can utilize the Project Lead the Way software and components that a Chromebook can't do.
Okay.
Correct, and they're replacing the ones that we currently have. These are just updated, an updated version.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Okay, and the last item is Board Item Eight I, Google Workspace for Education Plus. And this is replacing Schoolology, which is one of those things, some teachers liked Schoolology, some didn't. So that's probably a wash. The Finance Committee brings forward a motion, motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the three-year agreement with Treffura for Google Workspace Education Plus in the amount not to exceed forty-six thousand, twenty-seven dollars and forty cents over a three-year period funded out of the general fund.
Again, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And that's it for finance this evening.
All right, thank you very much.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I may have missed this during the meeting and I meant to ask during the meeting itself, but I did see a note within the monthly variance report. We're not doing a short-term borrow this year for June twenty twenty-three?
We are not. The board did have a goal when I first started to increase fund balance by approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to reduce our borrowings. We usually did two each year. This will be the first year since two thousand, I believe, eighteen that we do not have to borrow in June. We are still projected to borrow the second part of the year, but then hopefully by the following year, we won't have to borrow then either. So this is approximate savings, I believe around twenty-five thousand dollars. I think I put in a note for that at today's interest rates.
That's great news. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business, discussion and action to approve summer I E P diagnostic contracts. Mr. Lamb.
Each year, we have, for a variety of different reasons, a number of students whose evaluations for special education need to be completed during the summer months. So to be compliant with their timelines, we have staff that need to be in place to complete those evaluations. And so the staff that are listed there are those to be known at this time, to be necessary to complete the evaluations. Their time and amounts are based on estimates for the average time necessary to complete assessments, write reports, attend meetings, and follow through on other tasks necessary for I E P evaluation and development compliance.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the summer I E P diagnostic contracts as presented.
Second.
Mr. Barney and Mrs. Higgins-Betham with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. Moving on to Item B, Discussion and Action to Approve Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-two, Four Supplemental Teacher Contracts. Mr. Noack and Mr. Lamb.
Thank you. You have in front of you supplemental contract requests for many of our social workers, school psychologists, and school counselors. These contracts run July of the current year through June of next year. And as part of the process, as you can see in the, in the background, there's note of specific hours not to exceed. The, the process for that involves us putting out, or actually putting out a request to these individuals for these hours. They submit a pretty detailed overview of the work that they'll do. We, as a team, assess that work and then arrive at what is a reasonable expectation of hours.
Some of the work pertains to planning for professional development, school supply drives, other needs that, planning for student-specific planned development, just a variety of different things that need to occur both before the school year begins and then after the school year concludes for each year.
Very good. Mr. Ewer.
Just looking at the roster of who is involved in this, is it specific to that staff? That there, there's something that they have that would uniquely enable them to do this better than a different portion of our staff?
These are tasks that are unique to this particular group of, of staff members that, again, tasks that need to be completed in preparation for the school year and then to conclude the school year. That is unique to our pupil services group.
Yeah, and, and in response as well, some of it deals with levels. So there are things at the high school level, for example, relative to scheduling that, that demands more time during the summer. So that's where you see that here.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Twenty-three, Twenty-four Supplemental Teacher Contracts as presented.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ewer with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to Item C, Discussion and Action to Approve Extended School Year Contracts. Mr. Lamb.
Each summer, this is a follow-up to an item a couple of weeks ago. Each summer, we have just a handful of students who would be at risk for significant regression of their skills during the summer months. And so I E P teams determine that in order to minimize that regression and have students return to us in fall at a level of goal, progress, skill development to continue on in the fall, that there's a level of service that's necessary during the summer months. And so since the last board meeting where the last, the first, the first round of E S Y staff contracts came, there was another need for E S Y services for the summer. So this is to be compliant with I E Ps since the last meeting that now have E S Y services included.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Ewer, go ahead.
What kind of hours are we expecting out of this? Those look like fairly low dollar amounts if we're looking at continued services throughout summer.
The amount of service provided during summer is generally much less than the amount of service during the school year. It's not to make progress, it's to minimize, it's to minimize regression and loss of progress. So the number of hours is, depends on the student, but could be a half an hour to a couple of hours per week and across a couple of different service providers.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any reporting on this or data to show that this is actually helpful for our students?
These are each I E P team decisions that are based on student-level data. That's specific to their progress towards their goals and data that's accumulated both pre-break and post-breaks.
Okay, so there is mandatory reporting on that?
For the student, yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the extended school year contracts as presented.
Second.
Mr. Barney? Mr. Ewer with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. Moving on to Item D, Discussion and Action to Approve K M S Activity Group Additions. Miss Yenertal, is she here? Yes, hi.
Good evening. We have three Kennedy Middle School co-curricular activity groups that we wanted to bring forward tonight and they're direct feeder programs to our already existing high school programs. So the first is a science club, which ties nicely to the Environmental Club. We have a middle school, Future Business Leaders of America group, and then a National Junior Honor Society group, which fits nicely with our already existing National Honor Society group. With that, we looked at the data involving the number of hours our high school advisors put into these groups. So we are asking for the sci, for one science club advisor at forty hours total, which is six hundred and sixty dollars. At the high school level, we do have two staff members that split those hours and we allow that because we do have two interested at the middle school. And then our National Junior Honor Society advisor would be forty hours as well for six hundred and sixty dollars. And then our Future Business Leaders of America, we would ask for a head and an assistant at twenty-five hundred and eighteen hundred. And then also keeping in line with our high school co-curriculars, we're asking that the National Junior Honor Society membership fee of three hundred and eighty-five be paid as well as give or take approximately four thousand dollars for F B L A transportation to regionals and state and then advisor registration, lodging, and meals for state.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the addition of the K M S co-curricular activity groups, Science Club, Future Business Leaders of America, and National Junior Honor Society at Kennedy Middle School starting the Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-four school year and the advisor compensation as presented.
Second.
The second bathroom with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second, any discussion? Mr. Ewer.
Yes, budgeting for next year, this was already planned in or baked into that? Or is this going to be a new ball for you to juggle?
This will be added to the co-curricular budget, so yes.
But it was anticipated?
Yes.
Again, numbers drive the number of advisors and the depth of programming. Again, numbers drive the number of advisors and the depth of programming, so.
Yeah, I just wanted, wanted to make sure it was counted for.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we know the success of our student depends a lot on extracurricular activities, and these are good ones to add. I appreciate that. Anyone else?
I'm sure it's a coincidence, but Sarah, these are all great clubs. The coincidence is, I was just talking to Chris Reuter, or Dr. Reuter, maybe a few weeks ago, saying, hey, I think we need more clubs that include all students. And I, I was just throwing out some things like, you know, the ski club, the biking club, maybe we have some of these already, golf. I didn't think of a science club, so it, it, it just doesn't get any better than this. And I, I feel like every KMS student in the entire school should be joining the science club, if you know what I mean. It should be packed. So, anyway, thank you for this, and the fact that it feeds into the high school programs, that's great also. Really appreciate it.
I think we might need a few more advisors.
Yeah, pack it, just pack it full. We'll, Brittany will come up with the funds somehow if every student in the school joins it.
And speaking of that, Mike and Sarah will be bringing in the fall a review of all of our programming, enrollment, and then looking at our model around compensation to that and with surrounding districts as well.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item E, discussion and action to approve KMS and GHS co-curricular handbooks. Ms. Unerdall?
Yes, we brought the middle and high school co-curricular handbooks forward tonight because we are starting our online registration in mid-July, so we just wanted to make sure we got approval before that was started. So, it's nothing major, it's just some adding. Obviously, we'll add the three new clubs at the, the middle school level. We're adding lacrosse, which you approved a few weeks ago, to the WI sanctioned athletics sports that we offer. We just cleaned up some of the areas in the non-WI sanctioned activities section, and then we practice it already, but we're adding for school attendance purposes. If a student is suspended from school in or out of school, they may not practice or compete home or away during the duration of the suspension, and may return to practice the day following the suspension. And then, we just cleaned up some transportation pieces with just clarifying for our sports and activities where there's no transportation provided. And then, we cleaned up the verbiage with WI-recognized state organizations. And at the middle school level, we just kind of changed the games suspension chart because they have less games than we do at the high school. So, it's nothing with the amount of the suspension that's been changed, it's just the number of games because they have less games.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 KMS and GHS co-curricular handbooks and addendums as presented.
Second.
And Mr. Pollak with the motion, Ms. Hagan-Betham with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item F, discussion and action to approve summer school contracts. Mr. Mizziak?
So, last month, I brought the vast majority of the teaching contracts to the Board. Tonight, the vast majority of the contracts that we're bringing are elementary and middle school aids to support students with various needs. There are a couple additional teacher contracts that were added on to fill a position that kind of opened up very late. And the ask would be that you would approve the summer school contracts as presented.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the summer school contracts as presented.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Ewer with the second, any discussion? Mr. Loth?
Just wondering, did we have to cancel any sections, or everything well attended?
There were several sections that we canceled early on just due to low student interest, so those were the vast majority of the sections that we canceled. There weren't any sections that we canceled that had a high number of students who were interested in it. They were all classes that were running well below the 10-student threshold that we use as kind of a guideline as to whether or not to run a class.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c) for review of district administrative performance and consider employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employer over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Medved?
Yes.
Ewer?
Ewer.
Myself, yes. Loth?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Hagan-Betham?
Here.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we are now in closed session at 7:55.